I call the April 21st, 2020 Regular Meeting of Council to order. Councilman Kirschner will give the invocation this evening.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Landig?
Here.
Mr. Marn? Mr. Marn? Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mrs. Dowling?
Here.
Good evening. I want to welcome the public to this City Council Virtual Public Meeting. If you are attending through the published WebEx link, you will notice a window open on the bottom right-hand side of the screen entitled Q and A. This window will have opened five minutes prior to the start of the meeting and will remain open for 10 minutes after the meeting begins for a total of 15 minutes. During that time, if you wish to address council at a later point in the meeting, please type your name, address, and the topic that you wish to speak about. This is the only means for you to schedule your participation since the public cannot physically attend in person at this time. At the appropriate time during the meeting, I will recognize you and you will be unmuted. You will be permitted to make comments to council on the topic you requested to speak about. If you wish to comment on an item on the agenda, you will be recognized when that item appears on the agenda. All other comments unrelated to the agenda will be heard near the end of the meeting during the persons before council agenda item. Please make your speaking request at this time, and thank you for your virtual participation. Approval of minutes. Council, you have received the minutes of the regular meeting of April 7th, 2020. Who approves?
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Minutes of the April 7th, 2020 Regular Meeting have been approved. Public hearings, we have none this evening. Able legislation, we have none. New legislation, ordinance number 20-0-039.
Ordinance to authorize advances of funds and revisions to appropriation and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malinowski.
Members of council, this ordinance authorizes the appropriation of three different amounts related to various grants, the first being the CDBG COVID-19 grant in the amount of $94,411, and the second being the Morton Water Slide project under the CDBG program in the amount of $49,018, and then the third being a state grant by the Mentor Municipal Court in the amount of $16,216.79. And the applicable temporary cash advances that are required are also incorporated under this ordinance. I would recommend approval of the entire ordinance. Thank you.
Council, what is your pleasure?
Who does it suspend?
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Who do approve?
Second.
Second. Please call the roll.
Guys, miss me? Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Ordinance number 20-0-039 has been approved. Ordinance number 20-0-040.
An ordinance accepting an offer of purchase for a 1.504 acre portion of permanent parcel number 16B040B000260 by Wheelbar LLC pursuant to Section 189.05a of the codified ordinances declaring the property not needed for any public purpose and identifying unusual and impairing physical characteristics that negate its marketability, authorizing the city manager to execute or acceptance the purchase offer and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Council will remember that approximately 2012, the city had conveyed to it just over seven acres by the Ohio Department of Transportation off of Center Street near State Route 2, which we currently use for stormwater detention. The city had leased a portion of that property through an easement to component repair technology to accommodate a improvement expansion to their business, and as a result of that, through changes at the district level, it was thought a better option to provide an actual sale of that property. So last year, council will remember that best legislation, ordinance number 91 of last year, that released the conditions that were placed on that property so that it could be conveyed to us via a deed which occurred back in 2019. The city paid $25,500 for that conveyance. That represents the fair market value for that property. We now wish to sell it to CRT, which is represented here by Wheelbar LLC for the same amount of money. So we ask council for your approval. This area is used for parking to accommodate their expansion.
Council, what is your pleasure?
Who does it suspend?
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Who do approve?
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Ordinance number 20-0-040 has been approved. Ordinance number 20-0-041.
An ordinance approving the use of submerged lands at Mentor Lagoons Marina and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. And council is very aware of the project that we have under application right now through ODNR for the extension of the revetment wall, the rock enforcement that protects our marina currently. We've applied for an 800-foot extension of that rock embankment, and as a part of that down the road, we will be required to have a submerged land lease with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. So it's somewhat interesting because as a part of that process, before we can actually apply for the lease, the local government jurisdiction is required to approve and indicate that there are no interests in having any other activity by the local jurisdiction on this land. So we're actually approving our own, allowing our own application to move forward. So we are providing that assurance to ODNR with this legislation, and down the line, you will see the actual land lease once we are able to make application. Ask for your approval.
Council, what is your pleasure?
Who does it suspend?
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Who do approve?
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Ordinance number 20-0-041 has been approved. Resolution number 20-R-110.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to reprogram previously unspent fiscal years 2014, 2015, 2016, 2017, and fiscal year 2018 funds into the fiscal year 2019 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this evening, council, we're going to be asking you to entertain two pieces of legislation, this resolution and one that will be introduced a little bit later. It will actually clean up some of the outstanding funds that are available through past community development block grant allocations to the city. This particular resolution in front of you takes funding that went unspent from fiscal years 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18 and reallocates it into the 2019 funding year in the total amount of $60,158.69. $11,140.69 of that will be utilized for the city's annual pedestrian sidewalk safety program, so that will be used for ADA sidewalk ramps at the intersections. And then the other $49,018 will be utilized for the purchase of a water slide at Morton Park, which is in the Headlands area, which is designated as a moderate income area that's eligible for public improvements through CDBG funding. So what we are actually doing, and some of these resolutions this evening are tied together, we're freeing up some dollars that were previously encumbered in the Community Recreation Fund to be able to make them available for matching funds for the next ordinance that we'll entertain involving improvements to Civic Center Park. So we're asking council to reappropriate, reallocate these funds from prior years to be utilized for the purchase of a water slide at Morton Park and continued improvements to our sidewalk program.
Council, what is your pleasure?
Who does it suspend?
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Who do approve?
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes, especially since we're spending more money in Ward 4.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Mr. Blake?
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Resolution number 20-R-110 has been adopted. Resolution number 20-R-111.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to allocate the necessary funds to meet the Nature Works grant of the State of Ohio Department of Natural Resources requirement and further to provide additional funds for a new ADA compliant playground at the Civic Center and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council, and the city was very fortunate to be able to receive $90,000 from the last round of Nature Works grant funding through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. We are going to match that up with $50,000 in local money, which, as I indicated a little bit earlier, will be taken from the Community Rec Facilities Fund. So we will be using the money that we had allocated toward the water slide as our local match for this. We have Mr. Ken Kaminsky with us, our recreation director. Mr. Kaminsky, would you mind telling council a little bit about the project, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Philippiak and members of council. As Mr. Philippiak just indicated, we did receive that $90,000 grant for the natural resources. The proposed playground at Civic Center will be 100% inclusive, which means all the physically disabled children will be able to enjoy all the features throughout the new design. The unit we are replacing is outdated, very limited in its offering to the children, and also the playful parts have become obsolete. I would highly recommend approval. Thank you.
Council, what is your pleasure?
Who does it suspend?
Second. Call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Who do approve?
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Resolution number 20-R-111 has been adopted. Second reading, there are none. Third reading, there are none. Managers' report. Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I would say to council earlier today if they would consider adding resolution number R112 to the agenda, that something you would like to do now or after managers' report?
It's on the agenda for after new business, Mr. Phil.
So we are happy to learn just yesterday that waste management will resume curbside pickup for yard waste on Monday, April 27th, the 12-bag limit normally in effect will be observed. They will not yet be continuing bulk and unlimited waste pickup, so we ask our residents to continue to refrain from placing any garbage at the curb other than what is within the waste containers. The city will be leaving our temporary drop-off at Garfield Park open through Tuesday, April 29th, to make sure that those who haven't received the update have a place to drop off their weekend yard waste and make the effort to take it out there. Mentor's popular hometown heroes banner program is sold out for 2020. Thanks to everyone for their participation. Banners will be hung along Civic Center Boulevard and on Munson Road between Civic Center and Market Street from Memorial Day through Veterans Day. If you missed out on this year's opportunity and would like to participate next year, please email publicinformation@cityofmentor.com and you will be placed on a waiting list for 2021. The Menards traffic signal poles were delivered and erected on Friday, April 17th, but due to manufacturing shutdowns related to COVID-19, the signal heads and controller are delayed. The city's contractor expects shipment in four to six weeks, so we're probably looking at a mid-June operational signal there. We are pleased to announce that Fire Station Number 4 has placed a new Sutfin fire engine into service that replaces the 2007 Sutfin that will now be located at Station 1 as a reserve engine. The city has submitted its final permit application to ODNR for the construction of the next 800 feet of revetment stone running along our marina and preserve shoreline. We mentioned that just a little bit ago. ODNR normally has a 90-day review period and a public input period, after which the city can go out to bid if there are no major issues, and we think that we've worked those out with ODNR, but we shall see. So this puts construction somewhere in the five to six month range. The city is planning on opening the Mentor Lagoons Marina on May 1st. There will be some rule changes affecting the traditional manner of operations, which will include some limitations on guests and rules to encourage social distancing. These changes will be finalized this week with city council, and after their review, we will communicate that to our dockers prior to opening. MEACO, the Mentor Economic Assistance Corporation, has launched their new website. MEACO offers a wide array of programs and services designed to help small businesses, including SBA economic injury disaster loans and other COVID-related resources. They can also provide information on all city programs that are in place. So if you are interested, need assistance, please visit www.meaco.us to learn more about how they can help your business navigate these challenging times. That's all, Mr. President.
Clerk's correspondence. Julie.
Council is in receipt of the municipal, Mentor Municipal Court, March 2020 monthly report. That's all.
Commission, committee reports. Meeting minutes. Board of Building and Zoning Appeals, March 10th, 2020. Municipal Planning Commission, March 26th, 2020. Old business. New business.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Krieger.
Due to some safety concerns, I wanted to go ahead and make Blue Jay and Cardinal intersection there in Sausalito, a four-way stop. It's for safety purposes. That's a major full bus stop also, but right now it's for safety purposes. There's no objections.
Hearing no further discussion, is there any other new business? Resolution number 20-R-112.
A resolution authorizing the creation and funding of the Mentor Small Business Restart Program, authorizing the city manager to reprogram previously unspent community development block grant funds from fiscal years 2016, 2017, 2018, and 2019 for the use in the restart program and declaring an emergency.
I've heard already that this is a bit of good news. Mr. Philippiak, do you have any other comments?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council, and council is aware that there are multiple programs out there, both at the federal and state level, that are intended to assist businesses during this difficult time. The City of Mentor has put together what we believe is a program that's going to help satisfy a niche among small businesses that have actually been closed as a result of one or another government order. So we are introducing this evening the Mentor Small Business Restart Program, which will provide up to $200,000 total to those businesses of 25 employees or less that have actually been shut down as a result of some governmental action. So this will apply to businesses in our community that are bricks and mortar, so not those that are not home-based businesses, franchise businesses that have been closed and unable to conduct any business. So I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Malicek to talk a little bit about how the program will be implemented, what we hope to achieve, and we also have Kelly Conrad to join us if needed. Mr. Malicek.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak. As members of council know, at this stage, we have been acting kind of as a triage unit of sorts in the Economic Development Office to assist businesses with a variety of different loan programs, paycheck protection program that has been out there, Kelly Conrad, who's also joining us this evening, our Economic Development Administrator, has done a phenomenal job helping to guide many of these businesses through those protocols, but we haven't been able to offer anything as a local government to these businesses. So we decided to sit down Mr. Philippiak, myself, Stephanie Johnson, our grants administrator, and Ms. Conrad to devise a program where we could help some of our businesses that have been able to have absolutely no aid, obviously, and because they've been completely shut down and aren't doing any business whatsoever. So we devised this program. What will happen is this application will go live on Monday, 27th of April, and we'll begin accepting applications for this program on the following Monday, that's May 4th, Monday, May 4th at 9:00 a.m., allowing everybody to kind of submit at the same time, so there's not an issue that's derived from these others where money has run out because of how the program has rolled out. Everybody can start submitting on Monday, May 4th at 9:00 a.m. And this program will be for rent or mortgage payments for those businesses. Those businesses will have to show us a paid invoice or a canceled check for those expenses, and that's from May 1st on. So if the business is able to open in the month of May, that's terrific. They could show us, obviously, their rent payment, their mortgage payment, for May 1st on. If it is something that cannot open until perhaps later this summer, because if there's an extension of the stay-at-home order or something like that, and we still have money available in the block grant account that's being applied to this, that will allow those businesses to then apply their July payment, because that's when they would be open for business. So it's a way for us to encourage the restarting of businesses, trying to lay an actual expense that they're having. It also, obviously, helps our landlords that are out there, many of them are mentor residents and mentor-based businesses themselves, recoup some of their losses that they've also been having on mortgage and also rent payments that we have there as well. So this is something that is going to help our small businesses, our light flood of our economy here in the City of Mentor.
So thank you, Mr. Malicek. And council, so the $200,000 in funding for this program comes through our CDBG funds. It's a combination of monies that we received very recently that are specifically allocated for COVID-19-related purposes. That amount is $94,411, and the tenets of that program are for anything related to meeting the COVID-19 pandemic response. In particular, the category that this would fall under would be avoiding job loss caused by business closures and enabling the retention of jobs held by low and moderate income persons. The remaining $105,589 comes from, again, unused portion of past program years. The side benefit of allocating these dollars into the 2019 program is that we will completely utilize all past funding years programs. So it's a good thing from the standpoint that we can get this money back into the economy, assist our smallest businesses that are really the homegrown businesses here in our community, and also not jeopardize those funds for the future by having them linger unutilized at a time when we can utilize them the most. So again, I want to thank Kelly Conrad, Mr. Malicek, Stephanie Johnson, our grants manager, who have been very creative in helping to consolidate the funds to allow us to do this, and I would ask for council's passage.
Let's open it up to council for any comments.
Mr. President? First, I'd like to thank the administration for this very creative offer. I was pleased to see that email come through today, and it also addresses that segment of our businesses that have been left out of this, and a lot of people are getting pretty desperate after a month of this with no revenue. I had one question. One of the things that we've seen is a lot of the beauty salons, they do, some of them, they may not be employees but rent, so each of those would be considered a business because they pay rent to the salon owner, so they would be individually eligible for these funds if they meet the other criteria.
Yes, I would say so. Again, one of the criteria is that you have been shut down by a government order and unable to conduct any businesses. So, you know, the restaurants have been very fortunate in some cases, while they haven't, obviously, been able to realize the kind of revenue they normally would, they've had some. You mentioned beauticians. They were shut off entirely. So if they are paying rent and they are a mentor-based business, yes, they would be eligible.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other comments?
President, great job, you guys. Good teamwork. You did that really fast, in a couple of days, I think, at least, and great, great innovation. Good job.
Mr. President, also thanks, Stephanie. Stephanie did a great job getting us more money, as usual. Much appreciated.
And the target to get that turnaround time and a target for businesses, again, it's less than 25 people, correct, employed? Outstanding.
And there are a couple of, there are some periods of time that we have to have this out for public comment. So the first portion of, easier portion is the $94,411. That will become available for dispersment as early as the 28th of April, so obviously that would meet any applications that begin on May 4th, as Mr. Malicek pointed out, and then the remaining $105,589 will be available on 5/21. So... So in both cases, for those businesses that are opening in May or beyond, that money will be.
Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Who to approve?
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Resolution number 20-R-111 has been adopted. Persons before counsel, we have none. Counsel, do we have a motion and second to adjourn?
Who to adjourn?
Second.
Second. Meeting is adjourned.